All right, I would like to call this meeting to order. If you could all turn your cellphones off, or at least to silent, please, so that we don't hear them in the middle of the meeting, I would appreciate it. And if you could all stand and join me with a fudge of the flag. What's the allegiance?
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indelible, deliberate, and endless, for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to thank Kelly Skeehan, the town clerk, and her full staff, the highway crew, and the front office crew, for setting up everything yesterday and for today as well. The newly-elected town officers will be sworn in on Monday, March 20th, here at the town hall, at 5:30 PM. Everyone should have a sheet of the guidelines to be followed, a voting card, ballot slips, and a town report. All are available upon entering the hall. If you do not have a voting card, you cannot address this body of vote. Should you find any corrections or omissions in the annual report, please bring it to the attention of Kelly, the town clerk. And at the conclusion of the meeting, please return all the ballot sheets for recycling. Anyone who is not a registered voter in this town will not be allowed to speak or vote on any motion. If such a person is in attendance and wishes to be heard, they may appeal to the moderator, who will then ask if anyone objects. Upon hearing no objection, the body will be pulled. Are there any non-voters present who will wish to speak during this evening's meeting, and on what article? And if you could come to the microphone to say so.
Jim Melvin, please, Bob.
Thank you. Are there any objections to Jimmy speaking? Okay, Jen?
Jen Berkelitz, School Shop Program, Article 10.
Thank you. Are there any objections to Jen? Thanks. Yes?
Josh Roy, Freedom Food Pantry.
Thank you. Are there any objections to Doris? Thank you.
Craig Brady, Article 10, Recreation Budget.
Thank you. Any objections to Craig speaking? Okay, thank you. Yes, oh, sorry, Mr. Harriman, of course. Any objections to Mr. Harriman? Sorry, I didn't even let you. Oh, and Mr. Sager down the end. I forget about the ones I can't see. Any objections? I hope not.
And Ellen.
And Ellen. Any objections to Ellen? Okay, good, thank you. All right, now for the introductions, although we've done half the table up here. The town clerk and tax collector, to my left is Kelly Skeehan. Then we have the selectmen, of course, sitting out of order of my paper, but, selectman Bob Fring, selectman Frank Riley, selectman Rick Morgan. Then we have Ellen White, the town administrator, Brad Harriman, the public works director, and then Rick Sager, all the way to the left, the town attorney. To my right, this is the budget committee, and I will introduce Chairman Joe Goss to introduce his committee.
Joe Goss, chairman, I'll let each one introduce themselves.
Dan Scott, West Ospey Fire Department.
Julie Rosiak.
Jonathan Smith.
Kathleen Maloney.
Ag Ridley.
Marie McConaughey, Center Ospey Fire Department.
Lynn Parker, Ospey Corner.
Thank you. The only exception to being in a microphone to speak is to move or second an article, but please make sure we know who those speakers are. At this point, if you could look at the guidelines for town meeting, they are the same as they have been, so if you are not new to the meeting, they will look familiar to you. Please take a glance through, see if you have any questions, comments, or concerns. I will draw attention specifically to the secret ballot, as that is a topic of conversation every year. I will say that I have not completely capitulated to Mr. Babson, however, I have reached a compromise. We do already have five signatures, so if there are at any point a person or a voter wishing to have a secret ballot, just say so, and we have those signatures on hand. Are there any questions about the guidelines for town meeting? As long as we keep our comments to the point and not personal, there should be no cross debate, everything should go fine. All right. At this point, we will take a look at the results from yesterday. For the first time in my time as moderator, we had a tie for the race of selectmen, and that was between Sam Martin and Kathleen Maloney, who each received 104 votes. The race was determined by a coin toss between the two this afternoon, and Sam Martin took that race. Roy Barron received 47 votes. For the trustee of the trust funds, Pete Zavis received 217 votes. For cemetery trustee, Rick St. Jean received 214 votes. For library trustee, Denise Castle received 218 votes. For budget committee members, for three years, Joe Goss received 197 votes. For two years, Steve Mosher received 199 votes. For planning board members, there were two chosen, and they were Pete Zavis with 135 votes and Tim Otterbach with 123 votes. Rick St. Jean received 114 votes. For the zoning board of adjustment, Ralph Worster received 208 votes. For the articles coming from the planning board, Article 2 received 170 yes votes and 48 no votes. For Article 3, 192 yes votes, 56 no votes. Article 4, 197 yes votes, 54 no votes. For Article 5, 196 yes votes, 53 no votes. Article 6, 204 yes, 46 no. Article 7, 205 yes, 42 no. Article 8, 103 yes, 148 no. Article 9, 81 yes, 158 no. Are there any questions on those results? Okay. Now I will read the results only for Ospey for the school warrant, as New Durham has postponed their vote, and therefore we don't have the results for the whole district, so these are just the Ospey totals. James Manning, for the school board member from Brookfield, received 200 votes. The school board member from Wolfboro, Stacy Traits, received 200 votes. For the school board member at large, Wendy Fenderson, received 132 votes. Lois Jean Stevens received 47 votes. Darryl Pack received 28 votes. And for moderator, Randy Walker, received 201 votes. For the articles, Article 2 had 170 yes votes and 85 no votes. Article 3 had 183 yes votes and 70 no votes. Article 4 had 161 yes votes and 87 no votes. Are there any questions regarding the results of yesterday's election? Okay. So those articles are Articles 1 through 9 in our warrant. If you could all now open your town warrant to the Yellow Pages in the back. We have gotten through already Articles 1 through 9. At this point, before we will begin, I will ask Rick Morgan to address the body.
Good evening, you're welcome. First, I'd like to acknowledge that this is Frank's last meeting with us. Frank, this is the second time he was on the Board of Selectmen, the first time was in...
Seventies.
Not in seventies, I think, yeah. This last three years has been an absolute and total joy to work with Frank. I've known Frank for about 30 years, from the time I was a patrolman and he was chief down at the fire station down on Ospey Corner. I have a great deal of respect to him. He is an incessant reader, he's studied everything, he kept us on track, and literally in three years, we have tackled, I don't even know how many issues at this point, but policies and procedures and financial planning. It has been a very, very busy and active bullet, and Frank deserves much of the credit for that. Frank's health has been a challenge to him, continues to be. We wish him the very, very best, had he been able to, he would have run again, and I believe he would have been soundly reelected. But it has been a pleasure, and I'm going to, I'm going to miss him terribly, but he certainly deserves our gratitude for the time he's given us. And thanks back, we're here tonight obviously to conduct the town's business. If this warrant, and I should start by saying that there's a long budget process. We start way back in September, October, starting to collect department head budgets, then it goes to the Board of Selectmen, then it goes to the budget committee, and ultimately tonight you decide. If this warrant passes intact without any additions, this will be the fourth year in a row that we will cut the town tax rate. If this warrant passes as it is written, we will raise about $58,000 less by taxation this year than we did last year. I caution you, because literally in two hours, you could undo several months' worth of work. We're all in this together, we're in this vote together, and we need to sink or sail together. I believe we've been very, very successful in keeping the tax rate in check, and at the same time, completing some really good projects, like the highway garage down back. It was a $465,000 project that we completed, paid cash for, and we still lowered the tax rate last year. So please just don't add to it. The operating budget you will see is up in certain areas, and it always will be. Find something in your home that's cheaper this year than it was last year, because I know it's not mine. The trick, or the game, if you will, is to keep those increases less than what your revenues are going now, and if you can do that, and we believe we have, then you can keep that tax rate in check. With that, you want to show?
Thank you. At this point, we should be on page 92 of the Yellow Pages, and we will begin with Article 10. Article 10 is done by line item, and what we traditionally do is go through each line item and vote on it individually, then we will vote on its entirety at the end, and there will be no motion to not reconsider until that whole article has been completed. And yes, Mr. Babson, I will entertain a motion to not reconsider once it is complete. But I don't see Mr. Ryan, so maybe it won't happen. All right, so Article 10 says, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the budget committee recommended sum of $5,650,138 for general municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special or individual articles addressed separately." This is recommended by the budget committee, eight to zero. Amount recommended by the selectmen is $5,648,796 by a vote of three to zero, and a majority vote is required. I have a motion on this article. Thank you. All right, we will start with the first line item, for the conservation agent, at $4,306.
Madam Moderator, before you begin the first line, are there any corrections to be made to the numbers in the selectmen's or the budget committees' numbers? As I'm looking through here, the total that I see here gives us about roughly $1,300 difference between the two totals. I can only find one line item that I see different between the two, and that's the starting point line.
Okay.
And I see $342 there. And I'm wondering if there's another difference.
It's under the Kingswood Youth Group. The 4,000...
Oh, there we go, thank you very much, appreciate that. I didn't see it.
Thanks. All right, moving on, so we are at the conservation agent for $4,306. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor, please show your pockets. All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. Moving on to the selectmen's salary, $16,364. Is there any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. For the town clerk tax collector, $299,925. Is there discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Please feel free, if you do have any questions, to approach the microphone, and somebody up front will answer your questions.
Excuse me, Bob, cell phone West Ospey, I'm just curious why the precipice dropped. Is it no big elections or whatever?
Last year we had four elections, this year we only have one.
On years with the primary and general election for president, it bumps that up significantly. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. Moving on to voter registration, $4,826. Discussion on this line item? Mr. Adams? Are you raising your hand, or are you just voting?
I'm voting.
Okay. All those in favor? Mr. Adams is telling us to hurry up. All those opposed? Thank you. For treasurer, $11,030. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, all those opposed? This passes. For the selectmen's office, $662,611. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For economic development, $2,500. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Ospey Lake Dam Authority, $8,126. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. For legal fees, $35,000. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the planning board, $22,659. Is there any discussion on this line item?
I'm just curious why you'd ask that much.
Who would like to address that question? Mr. Morgan?
On the planning board, the ZPA, and on the Conservation Commission, you're going to see an increase. It is all in the secretarial time. Last year, if you remember and were here, we told you quite frankly, that was an educated guess, as to how many hours were going to be necessary. The previous person to that was here, that known, had been that secretary for a long time, and donated a great deal of her time. She is no longer in that position, and last year was a shot in the dark about the hours we needed, and we always spent each one of those budgets as a result of. So we corrected this year, put in the appropriate number of hours.
Okay, thanks. Is there any other discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the zoning board, $8,149. Same explanation, Mr. Morgan. Any other discussion for this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For government buildings, $216,216. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. For the trustee of the trust fund, $6,289. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For cemeteries, $36,810. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. For insurance, $123,500. Any discussion on this line item? Mr. Howard?
Greg Howard, West Ospey. Is this significant increase as a result of, as we had with the fire precinct, a loss of PLT and having to go to another provider?
Frank?
Last year, we funded this for 18 months because the provider changed July 1st, so last year's budget was only for six months, from July to December, and this year's budget's for the full 12, and that's because we did change providers.
Any further discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the police department, $1,125,266. Mr. Lang?
Lang, sorry. Again, we're over $60,000 increase. Explain.
Mr. Riley?
I'd like to explain that one. We sent our chief out to go and do a survey of the different departments in the area to compare our wages to one of the departments paying. One of the things you run into is we spend approximately $34,000 per officer to outfitting and training, and when you've got other departments in the area that are paying more in salaries, they have a tendency to leave us and go to another department, and that department doesn't have to pay for all that training and outfitting. In doing that survey, we found that our officers were down at the bottom of the list of the surrounding towns for the hourly rates, so we brought them up to just above the middle. They didn't bring them to the top, they only brought them to the very middle, and most of this is salary increases and other minor things within their budget.
Senator Ospey. So is there any other way that we could cut the budget rather than add to it? Maybe we only need nine offices?
Not in my judgment, there isn't. I think we have an outstanding department, Senator.
I'm not saying we don't, I'm just asking that from you.
No, I'm just giving you the answer. I do not believe we should cut any of our offices. I had them disletching for the past year and a half of having them near me about five times every week.
Not because of you.
Not because of me, but trust me, I had the opportunity to see them. This department does an outstanding job. Unfortunately, they're like all of our law enforcement across our entire nation. I don't think they could get all the credit for the pay that they technically deserve. I think this budget would be justified, and I think this budget should approve, this should pass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For police special duty, $25,000. Any discussion on this line item? Mr. Babson?
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Is this a case where we have to appropriate the money in order to pay when we get it back?
Yes, that's right. That is your question. This is where you see us out here, supporting power line companies, we've got the people who do the trimming. This is where we appropriate it, they pay us back, and we actually make money on this town bill.
So for the people here, it isn't costing us anything as many as money?
No, it's a wash item.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. Moving on to the dog officer, $13,829. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Well, at least I know you're still awake up there. All right, the fire warden, $21,955. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the highway, $1,293,450. Discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. For the transfer station, $439,543. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes. For the outside agencies, we'll start with the Appalachian Mountain Team Project, $1,200. Is there any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For tri-county cap, $12,000. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? For the caregivers of Southern Carroll County, $2,500. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. For Carroll County Transit, $3,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? End 68 Hours of Hunger, $5,000. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? For the Freedom Food Pantry, $8,000. Is there any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Kingswood Youth Group, $5,000. Mrs. Lang?
Hi, I'm just curious what this is. I don't know anything about it, and I have kids in high school. Is it KYCs? I've never seen it written that way.
Oh, yes. For those who are in the building, it's the KYC, down by the old bridge wing. Any other discussion? All those in... All those in favor? All those opposed? For Life Ministries, $6,000. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Ospey Revitalization of Main Street, $5,000. Any discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery?
I was just wondering, is this just a fund of, basically, for whatever goes on in a Main Street project, building, is there?
Who would like to respond to that?
What's the exact floor of all that?
Right. Somebody want to respond to what the $5,000 is for, for Ospey Revitalization for the Main Street program? Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Can you hear me? A lot of our budget goes for operational expenses. We pay a big electric bill, we pay telephone, which includes internet. We have a lot of insurances that we have to have on the board and on our belongings. Basically, all the bills that everybody else pays, we pay. And a lot of our money goes for office supplies because we do a lot of advertising of our events. We... We spend a lot of money for the things we do for the town.
Do you want to talk about some of those things, some of the events that you do?
Could. We do a community barbecue to which everybody's invited, usually in September, and that's free. We've had our farmers market, and we do advertising for that. Advertising is very expensive. We do a lot of letter writing, and so we have a lot of postage.
Mr. Emery, anything else?
I think that's all of them.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the OSPE Revitalization? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Medication Bridge, $450. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Northern Human Services, $4,425. Any discussion on this? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For OSPE Concerned Citizens, $20,000. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For OCC Daycare, $7,000. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the OSPE Children's Fund, $20,000. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the OSPE Historical Society, $4,000. Discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Schools Out Program, $25,000. Any discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Starting Point, $2,596. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For White Mountain Community Health, $3,779. Any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Central New Hampshire DNA and Hostages, $14,000. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Tyler Blain House, $400. Any discussion on this? Mr. Emery?
I just have to ask, what is the Tyler Blain House?
Thank you.
Sam, do you want to answer that?
Sam Martin, the director. Tyler Blain is a shelter, and we use it frequently. Tyler Blain has always made room for applicants. Sometimes they don't go, but they always find us a place to put somebody safe.
A shelter for what?
Homeless shelter?
Homeless, okay.
Any other discussion on this line item? All right, so for the Tyler Blain House, a homeless shelter, $400. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. On to the next page. For the Ambulance, $260,420. Discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery?
I was just wondering why the increase on ambulance service?
Mr. Morgan?
Last year, we only raised nine months of it because we had uncovered three months from the previous year. So this represents a full year. After this year, it levels out at $266,000 for the duration of the remainder of the contract, which was five years. So we have three more years after this, and we level out $256,000.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this line item? Voting already, Sam? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. For Emergency Management, $6,700. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For General Assistance, $55,269. Discussion on this line item? Mrs. Lang? Sam, do you want to address this?
This is our welfare budget, and we have to appropriate the funds. We appropriate the same, even though we don't always use them. And sometimes we don't come close, sometimes we do. But if we don't appropriate that, we have to have either a special town meeting or take it from somebody else's budget because of federal losses, you have to have welfare funds.
It used to be called welfare funds?
Yeah, it's general assistance.
Okay. All right, that's why I was concerned, because I had missed the other. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery?
Yes, you said that they had money from that leftover. Was there any money left over from the last budget?
Okay.
That could be added to that?
I can tell you in just a second. We didn't spend much.
Mr. Morgan will address that.
I think it was 14,000 that we spent out of the 55 that we raised.
So did we need to raise another 55 with all that?
We do, because you never know how many applicants are going to come in. What Sam alluded to is, well, federal and state law require if somebody walks to that front door and needs assistance, you have to help them, whether it's food or shelter or whatever. So we set that figure as what we believe we ought to be. And obviously, if we don't need it, we don't spend it. But if we didn't have enough, then that would cause us to try to window these other budgets that aren't...
I'm just looking at this line item, like, how much can I cut back on?
Well, we don't need to spend it. And I hope you realize that if we don't need it, we don't spend it.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Lang?
He asked a question that I was planning to, but my question after that is, if only 14,000 was spent last year, I have the book in front of me, but what was allocated last year? And where will the money go that isn't spent this year if it's not spent? It seems to me that they're asking for a lot, and a lot's not getting spent, and there doesn't seem to be a place for it to go.
Mr. Morgan?
Any one of the budgets, any one of the budgets that have money left over at the end of the year, and that's what builds up your unassigned fund balance. So the fact that, the fact that we raise it because that is what we believe is the maximum need that we would have, if we don't need it, then that money is in the general fund, it goes toward building up your surplus, which is a positive thing.
Any other discussion on this line item? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Recreation, $161,912. Discussion on this line item? Mr. Emery?
Yes, I was just wondering why it went down by 20,000.
Mr. Riley?
We and I have a new rectorax that we do not take the family insurance plan, the buyout step, so it saves us the insurance plan, the family plan.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering, we cut something out?
No, that was just the insurance.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Library, $220,895. Discussion on that? I don't see Mr. Dor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Patriotic Purposes, $2,000. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Conservation Commission, $6,569. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. There are no dollar amounts assigned to the long-term debt principal or interest, so we'll skip over those line items. We will move down to the interest on line of credit, which is $10,000. Is there any discussion on that line item? All those in favor? Oh, Mr. Babson, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, how much money of the line of credit did we use last year? And why, if we didn't use any, and we paid $10,000 at all?
We did use it. We did use it again until October. It's a tax anticipation note. One of the things that this vote has been successful in doing historically, they stopped borrowing as early as March. This last two years, because of some cash flow changes and management changes we made, we didn't begin borrowing until October. Harry, if you'll correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we borrowed about $1.5 million, you know, with payback, and then subnighed and pulled it in.
We borrowed 1.6.
1.6.
So it is a line of credit, it isn't a note, you said both the other way. It's a line of credit, we're not taking it until we need it.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, all those opposed? Moving on to Water, $205,852. Discussion on this? Mr. Emery?
Okay, I've had a little bit of research with this water, so I'm still trying to figure out how my bill is going to go down, which is what we talked about last year.
Your water bill or your tax bill?
My water bill.
Okay.
Because the whole reason the town took over the water department in January. It's not looking like anything is going to happen, and I'm not sure if there's anything that is going to happen, that the budget can be down, all of that, at all. Is the town going to take over anything other than...
Mr. Morgan?
I'd love to.
Oh, I'm sure you would.
First of all, I was at that meeting, and a lot of these people here, I don't believe anybody ever said you'd be a water bill was going to be down. I don't think that was part of the reason.
No, it was, it was.
Let me finish.
Why are water bills so high?
Let's, you've asked a question, let's let Mr. Morgan answer.
The reason that there is no change in the budget this year, we voted, this town meeting voted last year to take over the water system effective in January, and we in fact did. What I had hoped would happen, which absolutely did not happen, is there was zero cooperation between the Board of Selectmen and the Water Commission. So when we took it over, we took it over blind. We hired an auditor, committed an audit, and spotted the books, and we now are beginning the process of assuming control of the water department. So we level funded the budget at last year's level. It is more than adequate to run the department, because this last year, with those numbers in place, using their numbers from last year, they had about $65,000 left over. So that's why the budget level funded. My hope is, it may in fact be able to be reduced next year, and we have some ideas on how to do that. But with no cooperation before January, we were unable to get these things changed for the year.
Okay. My concern is that the town is voting on a bill that 300 people pay, or 330 people. So I'm just wondering how that's fair? Because I already pay taxes to pay for the water, so I don't understand it, and I'm still not getting it.
I get it, you don't understand.
Okay. Well, don't try to make me look bad, right?
The town, the town has to appropriate the money, even though it is ultimately in the hand, paid by the users. The town has to vote on it, and then when the water is used by the people who use the water, then they get billed for it.
In this budget, there's expansions, there's actually a bill that's $15,000 a year that we need the 300 people, the users, to pay, that the town should actually be paying. So is that going to be, I'm sure it'll have to be figured out at some point.
That's how I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Anything you want to add?
Should that be taken out of there?
I think the $15,000 you're referring to is a loan that the past commissioners took out, that we all have loans to tell them to do about until we took it over.
Right, but you had opportunity to do that. I tried to discuss with you, and you guys didn't want to talk about it.
And this is something that, you know, it's in here to be paid for. And again, in November of 2016, I have in front of me, we actually received three different budget proposals, and that is two we... Pardon me, I know, you were one of the ones that presented, and they all were different numbers.
You guys are the ones that won, except I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think we need that discussion, but I...
I think at this point, the questions need to remain relative to the numbers, not to the relationship. Could you clarify if the $205,000 in this line item is ultimately going to be paid back by the users? Or is that money that is raised and appropriated and taxpayers pay for that?
It is ultimately paid back by the users.
Okay.
Now, we have said in the past, there is later on in this warrant, there is a... The town has been contributing to part of the water department in a sense, we've been paying down the bond, which I agree with, because the whole town voted for it, the whole town can pay for it. But their operating budget is reimbursed by the users. To expand on that a little bit, we just met with a company this last week, and we're doing a complete rate survey and study and trying to break down, because I quite frankly, right now, don't think that the amount that's allocated to water versus sewer is correct. So we're bringing the company in to do some study on that, to figure out where the rate should be, and what percentage of the overall budget should be water and which percentage should be sewer. You might ask why that matters. Well, it matters because there's 350 water users and only 200 sewer users. We're trying to get the numbers to where they are fairly appropriated for the people who are using that service. If it's going to be a problem, will the town be paying for that survey? Nothing, zero, zero.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For the Sewer, $189,842. Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. So now we come to the end, and we have to vote in its entirety. There, correct me if I'm wrong, Kelly, there have been no adjustments or amendments to any of these figures. So we will be voting on the total listed at the bottom of the 2017 Budget Committee Recommended Figures. That is $5,650,138. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes.
Adam, moderator.
Mr. Adams.
I would move that we need to not reconsider Article 10.
Second. There's been a motion and a second to not reconsider Article 10. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? That passes, we will not reconsider Article 10. Moving on to Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of repair and improvements of town roads. This is recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, and there is a majority vote required. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on this article? Mr. Howard?
Yes, good evening, Brad. What roads in town are targeted this year?
Mr. Hammond?
Thank you. What we're looking to do this year, Greg, is we're going to continue on a shim and overlay on Chickville Road. We have a section of Circuit Road, the hill from the four corners up, that is coming apart. We want to do some drainage work, we're going to grind and put base pavement on, and depending on the numbers come in, we're going to continue on and start doing some shims and overlays on Granite Road, and see how far the budget goes when the prices come in.
Any other discussion on this article? Mr. Howard, again? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be added to the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This is recommended by the Selectmen and by the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion?
Motion.
And a second, thank you. Any discussion on Article 12? No? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of town building improvements. The town hall, the freight house, the highway garage, library, and police station, recommended both by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion for this article? It's moved? And seconded, thank you. Any discussion on Article 13? Mr. Fishbane?
Hash Fishbane, Senator Osby. I was just wondering if it were possible to put the OCC Building on that list. I notice every summer, walking around town, as I do working in town, there's 14 air conditioners hanging out the windows of that building, which I see as a huge fire hazard. And I'm just wondering... And I'm just wondering what could be done to keep that in our sights. I know that OCC is kind of a lesssee of that building, but the town owns it. Um, I'm wondering what, uh, what we can do here.
Mr. Hammond?
Yeah, Ash, uh, we do do some maintenance things in that building. Um, some of the equipment and uses of the building requires special type of equipment that the, the lease, that people lease it, do pay and maintain for. Um, the basic building itself, uh, the heating system, things like that, we do maintain and, and put money into that on a yearly basis. Um, we did have, actually, I didn't have any, through an insurance claim, we had a, there was a leak in the roof and that, so a bunch of the ceiling upstairs had to be replaced, I think that happened, um, last year. Um, so there are items that we do in there. We also do, uh, actually, we don't, maybe we help observe and coordinate the inspection and maintenance of the, uh, sprinkler system in there to make sure that it stays up to code and everything with the fire departments and everything, so. Um, we are involved with the building, um, just, you know, it does need some work, you're right, there's things going on in there, but, uh, we'll get you boiling a little bit at a time.
Mr. Morgan?
I, I'm also not at all opposed to adding, and I think that's fully well taken. Um, it would probably be a lot more efficient in the end to have a central air conditioner than it would be to have fourteen air conditioners, you know? My only cautionary statement is, we're raising twenty-five thousand dollars to maintain five buildings, it's not a lot of money. If, if there is a desire to add it, I, I would like to see that money pumped up a little bit, because my feeling is otherwise it's gonna use all of our maintenance money for all of the other buildings on OCC's air conditioning, no offense to OCC. Uh, this, this work is gonna be, have to be done, to be done, to be done.
I think, I, I thank you for supporting that.
I suggest that if you'd like to change it, you can come up and get a piece of paper and do an amendment.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure. Can you walk him and do that?
Come on in.
I stood in front of all of you.
Mr. Emery?
Um, yeah, I was also wondering if, um, one or two, though, we can be added to this list? As a town building, or does that have to remain separate?
It, it already is a town building, um, and we've done work on it in the past, it's not spelled out in the article, but.
Well, it's not on the list, that's why I'm just.
I realize that, and neither is the Fishbein or even the owner and other properties, I mean, it's, it's, this was to give to inform the voters that we're raising the money to maintain town buildings. It's not a complete list of all of what the town owns, um, but certainly, we have maintained a green water sewer building.
I was just wondering if it was being maintained by the three hundred thirty people?
No, no more than it ever has.
Which is not very good. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
One other thing to just bring up, we also have a, we have a maintenance line item that is in our government buildings budget that addresses a lot of the maintenance type issues with these buildings, even though they're not spelled out, which includes water, sewer, OCC, and all these other buildings, you know, Main Street Building, um, and stuff, so. This warrant article is more so for a few of the, for the larger projects that we wanna do for, for a larger improvement type thing that, um, you know, would cost more than just a regular, maybe a single thousand or fifteen hundred, these are the larger, uh, purchase type items.
Mr. Dolan?
Jim Dolan, Center of Ospey. I agree with Brad, that to, uh, the air conditioning in this building is a, is a big investment, and I don't disagree at all, it needs to be done. Uh, however, I would like to see some money added for a study to see how much it's gonna cost to air condition that building, and then look at it next year as a warrant.
So, for an estimate?
Yes, so we get a study to tell us what, what it's gonna cost.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion here for an amendment. Um, it says, "I hereby propose to add the sum of ten thousand dollars to Article thirteen for a total of thirty-five thousand dollars." Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, so now we will just discuss the amendment, not the article as a whole. So it is just a discussion on whether or not we will increase this article by ten thousand dollars. Is there discussion on this amendment? Mr. Bassam?
The, uh, the amendment doesn't say what it's for, would it?
It does not.
Go out and buy something else with the money, huh?
Well, at this point, it would say, um, "to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of town building improvements. Town hall, freight house, highway garage, library, and police station." So that's what it would say at this point, so.
Follow up?
Yes, Mr. Bassam.
Get out of the way.
Be nice.
But they still can take the, the ten thousand dollars and add it on and use it on other buildings. I think the amendment, if he's gonna write it, would sort of specify for air conditioning and, uh.
Um, I will assume, Ash, that I can add to this to say, "for the purpose of, um, improving the OCC building."
Yes, please, I'm better.
And I will agree with you, that is not proper, proper Robert's tools, but we're gonna go with it. So we will go with the amendment to say, "I hereby propose to add the sum of ten thousand dollars to Article thirteen for a total of thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of improving the OCC building." Mrs. Martin?
It's an upcoming selectmen, I see this kind of as a, a pick and a poke. Um, we have no idea what it's gonna cost, and I think we should not vote on the money until we do a study, until we know exactly what it's gonna cost, and then put it on the warrant article. I don't like to see money spent like that, that we don't have any idea where it's going.
Okay, thank you. This is our.
Uh, she pretty much stole my fire, uh, from Westospy, but I would second that idea that just a blank check with a vague statement about something to that building, I don't think cuts it. Uh, we need to know, it could be it's a five thousand dollar project, air condition it, it could be it's a twenty-five thousand dollar project, nobody knows. Um, you know, if, if there's a reason for that money, great. If not, I'd rather wait till we had a reason.
Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Well, first of all, I would hope, uh, hope that there's a little bit of trust that we're gonna, one, we're gonna follow what you folks here ask us to do. Um, I'm also, while I, I, I have no idea what it's gonna cost, what I can tell you would be my thoughts is if we can get it done for the ten thousand dollars, and we'll get it done. And it will be done well before next town meeting. If we can't, and it comes in at twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're gonna come back to you next year and say, "the ten thousand dollars wasn't enough, we need fifteen thousand dollars more." It doesn't seem to be rocket science to me.
Mr. Fishbein?
Uh, and to add to that, it's not just about air conditioning. Uh, it's about a severe fire hazard in the center of the town. Um, and that's really where I'm coming at, is more for the safety side, uh, electrical and things like that. You're already talking about a leaky roof, well, old electrical wires are just scary, but more deadly, so. Thank you.
Yes. Nadine, San Antonio Water Village, I, Ash, um, said what I was gonna say, but also that, um, yeah, just to reiterate that we're not just talking about air conditioning. That building, compared to the other, um, town buildings in town, is in need of some help. Even if it's, even if it's to, uh, clean it up, make it look nicer, ten thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot of money to fix what is probably, um, multiple issues in that building.
Yes, Sergeant, Sergeant from the executive director of the building you're talking about. I'd like to say we have made a lot of improvements to that building with the help of the Selectmen and Brad Hammond, you can. Uh, the electrical has been upgraded, and a lot of stuff has. We didn't ask for any additional money this year, because we were sold fast, you know, we don't, and we didn't. We get along okay with our air conditioners, I don't think they're too much of a fire hazard. We would like to upgrade, obviously, the proposal we got was looking around seventeen thousand dollars, and we thought that was too much money. As far as it being a fire hazard and an ISO, I think you'd better take a look around, because a lot of buildings are really reinforced from that, and you can't even get injured. I take offense at that. I must say, we work hard, we're one of the few agencies in town that does fundraising. We raise about fifty thousand dollars a year, and we try to maintain ourselves with it. If a town really wants to do something, they're, that parking lot up front is terrible, and it really needs to be upgraded, and the whole system in town floods out. So I don't know why you're choosing to pick on OCC, but come on down.
Any other discussion on the amendment to increase the amount by ten thousand? All right, so we will vote only on the amendment, not on the article as a whole. All those in favor of increasing Article thirteen by ten thousand dollars up to thirty-five thousand, please raise your placards. All those opposed? Okay, this passes. So Article thirteen will now save thirty-five thousand dollars instead of twenty thou, twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion on Article thirteen as amended?
That does include adding OCC buildings.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Yep. So the OCC building will be added into the parentheses of the list of buildings. Mr. Emery?
Sorry, this goes back to my first question about the water and sewer department. It says it's not in here, and I was wondering if it could be added.
If you would like to do an amendment, you can come up and get a piece of paper and make an amendment.
I think I'll let it go.
Okay. But at least the Selectmen will have in the meeting minutes from tonight that you wish to see improvements to that building. Okay? All right, seeing no further discussion on Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of town building improvements, town hall, freight house, highway garage, library, police station, and the OCC building. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes. Moving on to Article fourteen, "to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the bridge repair and/or replacement expendable trust fund previously established." This is recommended both by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on Article fourteen? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. Moving on to Article fifteen, "to see if the town will vote to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA thirty-five colon one for the purpose of acquiring a town beach on Ospey Lake, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be placed in this fund and to appoint the Selectmen as agents to expend." This is recommended both by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Emery?
Could you tell me what the provisions of RSA thirty-five, colon one are?
Sure. Who would like to take that?
Sounds like a town attorney person.
Oh, come on.
We're paying you, you might as well answer at least one of them. Talking about.
This is just the RSA that, uh, happens to, uh, oh, good, I'm sounding really bright. Uh, this is the article that, uh, under which the town can raise and appropriate money for capital reserve articles. That's all there is.
So it's just another reserve account, basically, what we're setting up?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Emery?
Uh, no, I didn't, that didn't really explain it, but I, it kinda explained it to you, so I think I'm all settled. Um, oh, I do have one, do you? And I, and I don't know how to ask this, because I think you didn't really want us to tell where this might be, but do you have any idea where this might be?
Mr. Morgan? It won't, it won't be down at Dunkirk?
No. If, if I might, um, I've kind of been the impetus behind pushing that this article get established. I actually primed the Budget Committee last year when I talked to them about this and said, "you know, we look, I listen my whole life to people who should bring the fact that the town of Ospey does not have a beach on Ospey Lake." And allegedly last year, I said, "you know, we look back at Basilic Men from fifty years ago and say, you know, they could have bought a beach for fifty thousand dollars, what idiots." And they all laughed. And I said, "I'm glad you're laughing, because fifty years from now, they're gonna be looking at us." So you know those, those idiots could have bought a beach for five hundred thousand dollars. It's all relative. We gotta strike somewhere. I firmly believe that there ought to be a Ospey Lake beach or Ospey residence. I can't imagine you finding any other town that does not have a public beach on their main body of water. As far as location, I can tell you that we have had some preliminary discussions with a, with a landowner. I'm not, literally, I don't wanna expose that because of what it could obviously do to the deed. We are open to looking at other properties. What this article does is, one, is it, it, it sows the seed. We want you, the people, to endorse this idea. And by making us agents to expand, if we can come up with a location, there is work that will have to be done, such as deed research and Ospey surveying, et cetera, et cetera. But make no mistake about it, if there is going to be a beach bought, it will be done by an Ospey town meeting. So if we find a location and negotiate a deal and get the legwork done, it'll either be us calling a special town meeting, or it'll be next year, or the year after, when they finally find the location. This gets the process started, that's all it does.
Mrs. Leonard?
My question was, do you have a plan, and is there one somewhere? Obviously, there is, of course, it's all relative, we know that.
It is.
In fifty years, we will say we wish we had. Um, but just so you know, that all that deed research and stuff should be in the money that you're paying your realtor?
And, and it well may, but the problem is, it will need to be an awful lot of research and work done before we get to the town meeting vote. And that's all this does. It didn't, it didn't set up a bunch of money, but it saved us money to, to start that process.
Not a specific place at this time, it's just opening it up.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
I would move that we not reconsider Articles eleven to fifteen.
There is a motion to not reconsider, there's a second to not reconsider Articles eleven through fifteen. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, we will not reconsider Articles now ten through fifteen. Um, it is seven thirty, we have been here for an hour, is there a motion to adjourn for a five-minute break?
Make a motion.
There is a motion and a second, all those in favor?
We, we, don't we recess now, not adjourn?
Did I say adjourn?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize, no, a quick five-minute recess. All those in favor of a five-minute recess? All those opposed? Okay, five minutes. All right. We will come back to order, and we will move on to Article sixteen, page ninety-five of the Yellow Pages in our town report. Article sixteen, "to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for the purpose of purchasing one new police cruiser and equipment. This sum to come from the town's unreserved fund balance surplus, and no amount to be raised from taxation." This is recommended both by the Selectmen and by the Committee, and a majority vote is required. It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded? Is there any discussion on this article? Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes. Article seventeen, "to see if the vote will, yeah, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-six thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new dispatch computer system and software for the police department cruisers. This sum to come from the town's unreserved fund balance, the surplus, and no amount to be raised from taxation. Both recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required." It has been moved?
Second.
And seconded? Is there any discussion on Article seventeen? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. Article eighteen, "to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for the purpose of paying the Ospey Water Systems' bond payment for one year. This is recommended by the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required." Is there a motion? It is moved and seconded, discussion, Mr. Emery?
I was just wondering how long we have left to pay on that.
Sure.
Does anybody know?
It would refinance it. We might, I'm gonna say it's less than 10 years, but I think, I think it's eight.
Harry, do you know? Yeah?
I was just trying to think, it's somewhere in the 20s, so 10 years is pretty close. 20, I don't know, I'll have to guess there.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be added to the Revaluation Capital Reserve Account previously established for the purpose of a complete revaluation of the town in the year 2020. Recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. It's been moved? And seconded, thank you. Any discussion on Article 19? Mr. Fishbender?
Just a, just a question regarding this, because I've never been a part of this when this comes up. Why would you put $25,000 in that account now when you don't need it for two and a half years?
Mr. Morgan?
I'm just wondering, I, we put $25,000 in a year with the intention that in five years we'll have the $125,000 that it costs to do the reevaluation.
That's, I wonder, thank you.
Any other discussion on this article? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,000 for the purpose of upgrading the server and computer equipment at Town Hall. Recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. It's been moved? And seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 20? Mr. Babson?
Who does our IT work here?
It's a company called Armon Networks in Placso. You're welcome.
Mrs. Lang?
I'm curious if anybody ever, like, specs these out to anybody, or do they just say, okay, we're going with this guy?
Ellen?
We actually just signed on with Armon Networks this past year. It's a new company, we, prior to that, had Clear Choice Computers, who's done the computer maintenance here at the Town Hall for decades. This company is, I don't know how to put it, but they are one of the larger companies doing the IT support for most of municipalities in the state, and they've come in with some recommendations to do these upgrades, things that we haven't done in several years, upgrades to, well, I shouldn't say that, we have been doing upgrades over the years, but they have some new approaches to better fit the town's needs.
Was there a bidding process, though?
No, there was not.
So why, why is that? Because I know that there's more than one company out there.
Because they are our IT company that we have signed on with, we have an agreement with them, we actually contract their services on a monthly basis, and...
So if it's a monthly basis, then it's okay for you to go out and...
That is correct.
...speculate from somewhere else? I'm curious, because I don't feel that you're, you're doing the town any favors by just saying, okay, we'll go with this guy, we're using them. I think it's really important that you start bidding, putting those up for bid, and I think that that needs to be addressed at some point, I don't know where, I don't know how.
Is there a process by which you could request that formally?
We have put out requests for proposals in the past, I believe before we signed on with Armon, just to do the regular computer maintenance, we did go through that process, but for this, in this project, which is upgrading the server and some of the main hardware, that was not put out to bid, it was just something that we had them quote, so it is something that we can do.
Mr. Babson?
So how much is the IT contract for the IT work versus buying the hardware? The RSA says you have to go up for bid or anything over $5,000.
Right now, for our regular computer maintenance, we pay about $1,600 a month, and that covers the two servers and 19 workstations. So that, that isn't included in this figure.
So if it, if it's a $5,000 requirement by law, why don't we do it? Quick update.
Mr. Morgan?
It's a two things money. We're raising $18,000, which is what our IT people have recommended we need to upgrade the servers. This is for the hardware. Correct. When we get ready to purchase that hardware, that will in fact go up to bid. With the $18,000 figure, we're not saying that it's gonna feed 18,000, this is the number that was given to us by our IT people. But it will go up to bid, as it will on any, we do regularly on any new purchase.
Well, I guess I signed with Mrs. Lang, if it was a $5,000 contract and $1,500 a month, I'm a little slow in math, but I think that's more than $5,000, then why don't we go up for bid?
You're talking about two different things. I'm talking about going up to bid on hardware, you're asking about going up to bid on the IT contract?
Yes. Maybe I'm asking at the wrong time, but, because I know this is for hardware, but not...
We, we received several proposals, which is the same as going up to bid, for our IT support. We chose this company after looking at others because of the fact that they specialize in municipalities.
So the short answer, Rick, you did go up for a quote originally.
We did not go to a formal bid process, and I don't want to tell you we did, but we did receive proposals from several different companies.
That's all I'm doing.
Okay, but, but what she said was that you didn't go for any proposals at this point, you just went ahead with the one you've been using for this time. And my concern is that things change really, really quickly in the IT world and the computer world, and we all know this, and I...
It's on the week.
Excuse me?
It's on the week, we know that as well.
Right. And I think it's important that you are constantly spoken this out and putting it up to bids, and I don't care whether it's going out to an IT contract or whether it's going to a hardware contract. It needs to be done for all of them, and it needs to be done for the town, you can't just assume you're getting the best price from that.
I think, I think you're misreading what I said, we're not assuming anything. We went, let me finish, we got several proposals for our IT, IT contract. We changed it July, so it was March, April, May in that area. We got several proposals and chose our IT contractor. This $18,000 figure is on information that we received from them about hardware updates that we need to make at Town Hall.
I understand.
When we buy those, it will go out to bid.
I understand.
So the $18,000 figure is coming from a recommendation of the current IT company that they use, that they did receive proposals before using, but prior to this expenditure of the $18,000, it will go out to bid. So it won't necessarily be spent with the company that recommended the figure?
No, not at all.
Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
Does that help?
It does a lot, and I understand that. I guess my point is that what she said is that, oh, we just went with the company we're using, and, and that was whatever.
To get the estimate, I understand.
But it didn't come across that way.
Right, yes, no, I agree.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions or clarifications for Article 20? Yes, Mr. Emery?
Just to clarify, this is what we need, this is what they said we need, right? They said, do we actually need this much? Do we, do we, do we need $18,000? For sure. You don't know because it hasn't gone to bid.
We may get it for cheaper than that, but they, they have given us a list of things that they believe that we need. Part of this also goes into what's called a disaster recovery plan, which is required by our, it's been, actually, it's been a deficiency in our audit of several deeds. You're gonna realize that we need to protect a whole bunch of information, all of the tax records, all of the assessing information. Part of that disaster recovery plan is included in this, in the sense that this company has come in and evaluated what we had for backup, et cetera, et cetera, and have made a series of recommendations on hardware updates that we need to make. That $18,000 figure is an estimate that was provided by them. We will then take what they tell us we need, put that out to bid, and get the best price that we can for.
Okay, so, so it's, it's basically, you just, you don't know that that's what they're saying.
But, right, but the IT company can make a better estimate than the selectmen who are not trained.
Could this, could this, could this come from unexpendable, unexpendable trust fund? Funded off?
The quick answer is it could, I would rather not, because we don't have a definitive figure. We bring, we're, we're, we're doing the 18,000 because that's the estimate that they provided to us. It may be 10, it may be 15. There is plenty of room in the unexpendable fund to do that, but we don't generally do it unless it's a definitive number.
Okay.
I just have to say that my concern is kind of like a used car salesman telling you, salesman telling you, you need to buy something extra when you buy a car. Okay, because when you're going with the company that's working with you, that's kind of where they expect you to go. So that, that's really where my concern comes from, and I can't reiterate enough that we need to make sure we're bidding this out.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Mr. Billings.
...... There is no expendable trust fund set up for computers except for Kelly's. So there's nothing you can draw.
I believe he was asking about doing it from the unassigned fund balance. I don't think he was asking about it from trust fund.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Mr. Emery, did you mean the general fund?
Right, that's what I meant.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, this passes. Moving on to Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to be added to the Benefit Pay Expendable Trust Fund previously established. It is recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. It's been moved? And seconded, thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 21? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. For Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $26,000 to be added to the Invasive Species Control Fund previously established for the purpose of preventing and treating milfoil in Ospey Lake. Recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. Is there a motion? It has been moved? And seconded, thank you. Is there discussion on Article 22? Mr. Babson?
I don't live over in the lake, but I realize it's a treasure. Are we making any headway in this every year with milfoil money?
We, we are making...
Are we getting some?
We are, actually. The, the, in every one of the areas that Ospey has responsibility over, there is a substantial reduction in the amount of milfoil. Understanding you will never get rid of it. It's something that we need to stay on top of, we need to continue to treat it. We have, I believe, on our side of the lake, done a much better job than our neighbors. The Ospey area, the Ospey part of the lake is doing well, and we are making headway. But it will never go away. It's something that we're gonna be treating, quite frankly, for a while, to try to keep it straight.
Mrs. Lang?
And I'm curious, is this fund depleted every year? It's great that they're doing it, and I am 100% for it, but I just wonder, how much of this money is actually being used for this program?
We, it is, it is a fund which we keep rebuilding, so we are using that about, about that amount of money every year. We are now getting some state funding back, when they finally changed, they added to the boat registration so that a portion of those gets, comes back, which you'll see on the revenue side. But we are expending $25,000 per year on a regular basis, and we simply refinance, refund the fund.
The reason that I ask that is because we know that the extra money goes into the general fund, and I'm just curious about that particular thing. Thank you.
But, but no money that's not spent out of a warrant article goes back into the general fund, it sits, it sits in that capital reserve fund. Okay?
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the town and the Ask Me Local Number 534, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. And if you turn to the next page, the estimated increase is $13,432, and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,432 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. This is recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. It's been moved? And seconded, thank you. Is there discussion on this article?
I just wanna know what it is.
Mrs. Lang? Yep, Mr. Morgan?
Can I speak to this real quickly? This is a one-year contract between the town and our union employees. Normally, we would do three-year contracts. We have been involved with what I would describe as a very robust negotiation with our, with the union. I don't want to assign any blame to it. What happened was, because we had to change our health insurance carrier, that never got formalized until late October, and we, quite frankly, just ran out of time. I, we worked to get a three-year contract, and were unable to come to an agreement. So we have a one-year agreement, which is this year, and right after town meeting, we will begin negotiations so that next year, we will hopefully be voting on a three-year contract, which is what we normally do.
Mrs. Lang?
Who is this union? What people? Are you saying the town employees are unionized?
Many of the town employees are unionized and have been for many years. All of the, all of the, all of the highlight, all of the incinerator, several of the workers here at Town Hall, Recreation Department. I think the only department that is not included in the union at all is the Police Department.
Do you have a question, Mr. Emery?
Water and sewer, also.
Water and sewer now will be the town employees.
If you would like this speed, come up to my microphone.
Okay, well, I guess let's go back to the, the town employees, so is that mean that they're, we're paying separate for that, the 330 people that pay for that?
Or that's in?
It's 330 people that pay for the budget for the water and sewer department, not the town. So are the 330 people that pay the water and sewer budget paying for the increase for the salaries, if they're being paid from the town?
Yes, they will be.
Okay, so it's not the town paying for that?
The town pays them, and then the cost associated with that will be reimbursed by those users.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes.
I think we'll say not reconsider. Was it 16 through 23?
Okay.
What are...
Oh, a second, thank you. There has been a motion to not reconsider Articles up to Article 23. There has been a second. All those in favor of not reconsidering? Thank you, all those opposed? Thank you. We will not reconsider any article up to 24. Moving on to Article 24, shall the town, if Article 23 is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address the article cost items only? So Article 23 passed. So, Mr. Sager, can we skip this?
Sure. You're not earning my keep tonight, am I? It doesn't really make any difference because it, it did pass, and you would normally only take up this Article 24 if it was defeated, you can pass over the article or vote in favor of it, it doesn't really make any difference at this point.
Okay, there's been a motion to pass over, and a second. All those in favor? Thank you, all those opposed? Thank you. So we will pass over Article 24. We will move on to Article 25, to see if the town will vote to appoint the selectmen as agents to expend from the Ospey Town Water Capital Reserve Fund previously established. Recommended both by the selectmen and the Budget Committee, and a majority vote is required. It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Is there any discussion on this article? Mr. Babson?
Thank you, Madam Water. Is this being done because we took it over in January and it's a one-time, from now on, we won't have to do this, or it's gonna be an annual thing?
Mr. Morgan?
There are two funds that were previously held by the Ospey Water and Sewer Commission. We can't even find where those funds were ever legally established. But there are, but there are two funds. There is a lot of fund in a sewer fund that they were putting the leftover money each year into. We've consulted a lot with not only our attorney, but with, particularly with the Department of Revenue Administration. These next two articles have been suggested to us by DRA for this year. They are going to continue to look at it... They are going to continue to look at it, and we may, that's why I don't want to tell you we won't be back next year to do some more corrective language. We can't find that they were ever legally established, but DRA says that these two articles will cover us for now and that they will approve us expending money from those funds as needed. And if we need to do more corrective actions to fix, if you will, the funds, then we may well be back next year. But we're doing this with the advice of DRA.
Thank you, Rick.
Mr. Babson.
Thank you, Rick. Didn't they have an auditor? Did the auditor find the funds?
Advantage to the, Advantage to the Water and Sewer Commission, this wasn't even established by them. There was a period of time back when the town first bought the water system, that a company called Wooded and Curran was hired to run the system. It's during that timeframe that they were running the system that they created these two funds.
Maybe we should check their bank.
They created the two funds and used the leftover money and put it into those funds. So Advantage to the Water and Sewer, we can't find that they were ever established by a town meeting, which they should have been. But we're, we're doing this with the advice of DRA to try to get these funds that are legally held and le, and that we can legally expend for them.
And we know where they are.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I think they know where the money is, they just don't know when the account was established. Mr. Emery.
Was the account not established by the commissioners and not by the town? Because it was, it was board of commissioners and they only handled the 330 people. It was not by the town, right?
Helen?
When Wooded and Curran, um, got done with their subcontract work, the funds were turned over to the trustee of the trust fund, so that's how they were established for the town. It wasn't necessarily established by the commission. They were turned over once Wooded and Curran.
But they would have been voted on by the commissioners?
Correct.
Or by the people?
The commissioners have been adding to the funds over several years. That's the question.
Wow, that's the question, okay. All right. That's all I need to know.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to appoint the selectmen as agents to expend from the Osceby Town Sewer Capital Reserve Fund previously established, again, both recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee and a majority vote is required. It's been moved? And seconded, thank you. Any additional discussion to this issue? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to accept the donation of a build-out study from the Danhold Pond Watershed Trust to be used for informational purposes by various town departments, boards, and commissions, including, but not limited to, the updating of the town's master plan. And a majority vote is required. Um, it's been moved? And seconded, thank you. Is there discussion on this article? And second.
If I may, to populate planning word, uh, this has been said before, but I think it bears repeating, that a build-out study is simply a digital analysis of Osceby's current land use and then projects how land use may change as the town is built out, both commercially and residentially, over time. Uh, and the idea is to help anticipate issues that might develop over the next five, 10, 15, 20 or more years. Uh, this study, uh, may indicate how other towns, what strategies other towns, uh, use to cope with such problems. We will make no recommendations. It's meant to be entirely informative. Um, the New Hampshire Office of Energy and Planning strongly recommends a build-out study by towns as a best practice for its master plan and other purposes. The Lakes Region and other planning commissions also recommend this. Many towns have done them, and so far as I can determine, uh, no other town in New Hampshire has found the concept of a build-out study at all controversial. Now, uh, as it happens, uh, the Danhold Pond Watershed Trust in January raised the necessary $6,000 to conduct this study from Osceby citizens exclusively and Osceby businesses. So the study is now underway, and it is guided by an informal advisory group, uh, consisting of members of planning board, uh, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Committee, and other town bodies. These individuals don't represent the bodies they sit on, they represent themselves, but the point is that this study is being guided by a small group of experienced, knowledgeable, committed public citizens, uh, public spirited citizens, uh, to make sure that it's as relevant as possible to Osceby. And it's going well. It should be done, I would say, in a few weeks. I have a couple of questions, if I may. I'm trying to understand what you would imagine would be the consequence, the practical consequences of a no vote.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
I'd love to explain just briefly why we're here. Many of you who were here last year will remember that this was discussed at length and voted down. It was voted down last year when the members of the Conservation Commission wanted $3,000 and then a partnership with somebody else for the other three. There was a lot of discussion, not just about the money, but about the study itself and what the study does, and the townspeople voted no. The reason we're back now is because Mr. Gillette, as a member of the planning board, chose to go to the Green, um, the Danhold Watershed Trust group and asked them to fund the study anyway. The Board of Selectmen notified them that they could not accept the gift without the Selectmen doing it in a public hearing. We held a public hearing, the Board of Selectmen voted not to accept it. Green, uh, the Danhold Watershed Trust has informed us that they're going to go ahead and do it anyway. Mr. Gillette chose to go ahead and do it anyway, and I believe it's disrespectful to the vote that was taken at this town hall. It's disrespectful to the process that we used, the public hearing, and the Selectmen voted not to do it. But that doesn't surprise me. Whether or not you choose to accept it is your business, but this is your town, and I don't believe anybody, and in particular, an elected official, should disregard what this town meeting says. I think you stop down that path, you are on dangerous land. I couldn't care less whether we do a build-out study. I do care about the process, and I think the way it's been done right now is underhanded. It's a conflict of interest on many people's parts that are involved, and for that, you're wrong.
Uh, one small correction here, if I may. Uh, I did suggest to the Danhold Pond that they might trust, that they might like to follow, uh, the example of a land trust in Lobe, Maine, where a similar issue deraised in New Hampshire, and they took up that suggestion, looked into it, and they decided to fund it. Now, I, I would appreciate if you'd answer this question, however. What do you see as the practical implications, if any, of a vote not?
My very brief, and I don't want to go down this rabbit hole too far, but the fact of the matter is, where the conflict comes is the fact that you are also a member of that organization.
Which organization?
Of the Danhold Watershed Trust.
Well, I'm a member of a lot of organizations.
I, I think, I think, Rick, the question is, why would a build-out study be controversial?
No, that's not the question. The question is, if the voters know, what, if any, practical implications are there either for the use of this study?
There may be none because you choose to ignore the will of the voters. You've already said, you've already said you're going to do it if the Danhold Watershed Trust says they're going to do it anyway. You've already said that you're going to participate, do what you want to do, so in that regard, maybe nothing. If you respect the will of the voters and what they decide here, as I believe you should have a year ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
The voters voted on one very specific one article. What was, did we spend $3,000 on this or not? The answer was no. Okay, fine. Now, uh, what I am wishing for here is, uh, hoping for reassurance from you, that a no vote would not mean that you would seek to prevent the planning board, the town development committee, and others from actually using the results of this study. You wouldn't do that, would you?
I don't control other, other elected boards, but I can guarantee you that I will use the bully pulpit as much as I can to point out when you disrespect the will of the voters. If the voters vote no, you should respect that, we should respect that, you should move on to other, other issues.
I have the greatest respect for this body, however.
No, you ignore.
No, I'm sorry, I do, I have a question.
Mr. Gillette, I'd like to have other people ask questions.
I don't have one more question, but I would be happy to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin.
Yes, can we back up with Rick's comment about Mr. Gillette as, as a member of the planning board? He, he did not do that as a member of the planning board. I followed this whole issue. He did that on his own, and the vote was, they voted it, and then they voted it back down again that they weren't going to accept it. I received a letter, a copy of a letter, from Danhold Pond Trust where Mr. Gillette went beyond the board and told Danhold Trust that it was absolutely all right and it was approved by the board. It was not. Mr. Gillette has disrespected the body of this town. I vehemently spoke against this last year. I spoke against, speaking against it again this year. And there is another town locally, Tamra, has also been fighting this for several years. So there is another town locally that's going through this. Um, this is not something, this is, this is really based on conservation, where you can save land and prevent places from being built. That's what this is about.
Okay. Mrs. Bligh.
Wow. It, it's my understanding that the article last year said, will the town raise money to do this?
It did.
And the vote was no.
Correct.
There was nothing in that saying that anybody could go out and pursue this. Okay, that's not being disrespectful. That's saying, we think that this is really important and we're going to find a way to do it. I'd like to ask you why you don't think it matters.
Rick.
If you were here last year, there was a lot of discussion, well-passed.
I just asked one article.
Let me, let me finish. Let me finish. There was a lot of discussion, well-passed, for $3,000. $3,000 isn't even a blip in what we passed, the $96 million budget. There was a great deal of discussion about the, about the study itself, what it does, and whether or not it was worth it, and the townspeople said no. As far as I'm concerned, that's it. If it was something that I proposed tonight, and the townspeople said no, then that is it.
But you can't tell somebody that something they feel is important if they're willing to fund it themselves, when you're saying, we're not spending the money, we're not raising the money. I don't care what you talk about otherwise. The bottom line is that it said, will we raise the money? And the town said no. I don't care if they talk about taking Uncle Henry out to lunch. If that's what the town said, then you have no business saying he was out of line, because what he did was important, and anything that you do conservation-wise is important, and I'm really, really sad to think that anybody in the town would think that it's a problem.
Mr. Bligh.
Yeah, um, first, I'd like to make sure that we're treating this year's bill, this was more an article that's something different from last year's warrant article. They're separate things. I agree with you, Rick, that this is our town. And as a member of this town, I value having information about the town I live in. I also have worked in other towns that have build-out studies done, and I've found this information incredibly useful. It gives me information about the use of the land, what the land is, um, we can find out what kinds of properties are being protected, landlocked, all these things become available to the citizen right there. And they help us make collective decisions, as collectively as a community as we make our master plan. How can we possibly not have this information available to us if it's given to us? I strongly urge the voters in the community to accept this gift. It's incredibly valuable. Information is not something you throw away.
Thank you, Mr. Bligh. Mr. Christel.
Bob Christel, about Osceby. I'm in a similar camp to the gentleman that just spoke. Uh, in my former life, uh, I lived down in Fairfield, Connecticut, and I was on the committee that rewrote town master plan at one point. And, uh, a build-out study was then, and I feel strongly would be now, a very valuable tool. It's oversimplifying it somewhat. It basically takes a look at our current zoning rules, current environmental regulations, everything, and says, okay, let's take that out, using the current rules, regulation, situation, and run it out to where we're fully built out. It's a build-out study. You look at the results of this build-out study, and like any study, any estimate, it's a best guess, but it's a very carefully done best guess, and you may look at it and say, gee, that looks great. Osceby's going to be a swell place in 25 or 30 years when every available buildable lot is built on. Or we may look at it and go, wow, we got to change our zoning, or wow, we got to put in some environmental protection, or possibly take some out if we find that some protective clause is limiting development where the consensus is it should be. But the whole idea of the study isn't to tell us what we should do or what we shouldn't do. It's, if you stick with the rules you've got now, this is what you're going to have when every buildable lot is built on, when every developable piece of land is developed, when every protected piece of land is still protected. And if you don't like what you see, now it's time to play games with your zoning rules or to maybe conserve another 500 acres somewhere because you're really on a woodsy area when that area is built out, whatever. It's an incredibly valuable tool, and I say this from having helped to rewrite the master plan for a town of about 50,000 people. I, I was baffled last year that somehow the good citizens of Osceby managed to get beat into not funding that plan. I think there was some misinformation spread. It's a very simple concept. If we follow the rules we have now, once everything that can possibly be built is developed, what are we going to have? If we don't like what we see, we better fix it now before all of that development happens.
Thank you. Mr. Legenda.
I'm on the planning board, and I tell you, we had a profound discussion about this. A build-out study is formally needed, and we'll probably use it. There's one thing I've learned in one year on planning board. Wording is everything. Except, I don't like that word. If they want to give it to the town, they want to make it available to us, look at and use, that's fine with me, I'll use it, but don't tell me I have to. If you did that, it's, it's a gift to the town to put these things to them.
Mr. Goss.
One thing that's not telling me about the build-out study is it li, it limits the individuals' use of their properties. When it gets close, when the lands get close in the areas they want to limit their building, they will put a stop to you building a house? Yes, it will, and it has it many times.
If you, if you would like to speak, go to the microphone, and let's keep the cross debate down. Mrs. Martin.
Mr. Goss is right. What happens here is they set it up, and they set up the zoning as to how it saves as much land as it can. And he's right, he can tell you where you can and you can't build, where you can put a business and where you cannot put a business. Once again, I take greater front of this. I was a voter last year. I spoke not only against the money, but against the study itself, and I know that many other people here did also. So you can't limit it to just what the money was last year. You have to listen to what the body of this town says.
And if we need to say those arguments again, let's do so, but let's keep our discussion to this year. Yes, Mr. Arnold.
Yeah, um, Josh Arnold, for our village. I'll do my best out of coherent, uh, thought here. It's a late moving snow around. I think many of you are probably, but, uh, so I think what's important is that we do, uh, sort of tease out these, you know, two issues of where there's this bill that we're seeing on this year's, um, you know, ballot here. From perhaps a mistrust in the process and, and what's, um, transpired with the Conservation Committee and so forth. As a, uh, a resident who, um, been here, you know, only eight years now, which I know is crumb, apparently, a lot of you, um, but I hope to be here for another, you know, 50, 60, 70, maybe more if Frank turns around a little clock and the lower beach, um, anyway, you didn't hear nor there, but the point is, I think it's important to have some, some long-term, really long-term, um, planning, and any information that we can gather at this stage to help us inform that, I think is really, really important and useful. And it's up to us as a town to do our due diligence and say, um, with this information, to see what were the assumptions that were made in that research, or what was the lens, and, and we can make judgments from there, but nothing in a study, in the build-out study, mandates what we have, what we can do with it. We can leave it at the door if we like, um, but it's information, and I think to, to not accept it, um, is, is a, it's short-sighted, it's a missed opportunity. Uh, so, um, I think what we should do is invest more time and energy So I think what we should do is invest more time and energy as a town, really talking about what we want to see. What is our vision for this town? Because we're going to grow and develop whether we like it or not. That's the demographic trend and that's going to happen. And what, and that's to some extent out of our hands. What's in our hands is what that looks like and how we go about it. And I think that this study is just one piece of information along with many that we can use to come to that, that conclusion in a responsible way. So that's what I'd say.
Mrs. Economy.
My question is, if we vote not to accept this, is this not going to be available for us to use?
Mr. Gillette, can you answer that?
No.
Okay.
It's in the online. We might as well be talking about voting to accept federal census data about Ospey.
But what I'm saying is, if, if we vote this down, we can still use this information, whether we vote for it or vote against it.
I am authorized by Bob Pratt of Dan Hole Pond Watershed Trust, who couldn't be here tonight, to tell you that if you vote for it, a complimentary fully copy will be sent to the selectman.
Okay, so what I'm saying is...
Yeah, and I think that maybe the, the question should go to Mr. Sager, that if this is voted on, either yea or nay, are the implications different?
I can't see the implications being different.
So can we call a vote?
Can I, can I just make one point?
Well, no, because there is a motion on the floor to call the question. And no, no, nobody can speak. There is a motion on the floor to call the question. And there is a second. We will vote, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So we will vote to call the question first. I do need a two-thirds majority for that. So that means the best majority. So all those in favor of calling the question, which means to end debate and we'll come to an immediate vote. All those opposed? I'm going to call out a two-thirds vote. So we will end debate on that and we'll come to a vote on Article 27. To see if the town will vote to accept the donation of a build-out study from the Dan Hole Pond Watershed Trust to be used for informational purposes by various town departments, boards, and commissions, including but not limited to the updating of the town's master plan. A majority vote is required. All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, we're going to have, so. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Your placards high, command your ballot clerk to tap, please, your sections. We're not going to do a secret ballot, we'll just do the tapping. And anybody up here wishing to vote, please make sure you put them as well. This is how we go. Ballot clerk, when you have your numbers, you can bring them up, make sure you get the front row. Thank you. You can put your placards down. All those, all those opposed, please raise your placards high until I try to put them down. Okay, plats down. There were 30 in favor, 27 opposed. This passes. And that is our last article.
Not to reconsider.
There is a motion and a second to not reconsider. Article 27, Mr. Adams, do you want to clarify this Article 27? Okay, Article 27.
Did we already move not to reconsider the other two?
We, we have not. Motion to not reconsider 25, 26, or 27.
All three.
Okay.
Seven.
There is a second. All those in favor of not reconsidering Articles 25, 26, and 27? All those opposed? Thank you. This passes. Article 28, as you hear the reports, are there any reports that are not in the book that wish to be heard? No? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And there is a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Have a great day. You're welcome.